Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting in November. We'd like to welcome everybody in our audience today and those of you watching us on Electric City Television. Invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember Tony Stewart in respects to the flag be led by Councilman Buck Roberts. Please rise.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to give you thanks for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask that you protect our law enforcement. I ask that you protect our fire department and the men and women serving abroad as they continue to do their jobs to protect us and protect this great nation. But dear God, I come to you tonight to give you praise for the diversity that we see all around us. I thank you for the complex beauty of all your creations. I pray that we as individuals learn to tolerate the differences that we find in one another and not to view these as threat to ourselves, but take these differences and see them as a reflection of your creation. And finally, dear God, I pray that you will help us acknowledge the many blend of cultures and people in this world by actively seeking solidarity with one another. All these things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight before we get into our meeting, we have a special recognition and I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come down and lead us in that. Chief?
Thank you Mayor and thank you Council. Recently, we've had a resignation of Captain Amon, which left a opening in our administrative staff. And so at this time, based on our scoring and the promotions this year, Captain Mike Akins is up for promotion to captain. Tell you a little bit about Captain Akins. Started his career in corrections in 1999 and accepted a position with the Police Department in 2003. While he was serving in the patrol division, he was promoted to corporal in 2007 and was then transferred to criminal investigatives and investigative division. In 2008, he was assigned to the major crimes unit. 2011, in the same division, Akins was promoted to the rank of sergeant and assisted investigating major violent crimes while also supervising his staff. In September of 2012, Akins again was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, stayed within the detective division. For Captain Akins' new duties, he will be assigned to patrol. He'll manage two different shifts, Alpha and Charlie shift, while also managing our cops team that manages our traffic, special events and any event and community meeting within the city. He also manages our downtown patrol staff. This time, do you have anybody here you'd like to recognize, Captain Akins that's here tonight?
My wife and girlfriend, wife and children.
Okay. I'm gonna ask Captain Walters to come down and assist me. Depending on the badge. Captain Akins, raise your right hand. Feet after me. Aye?
Aye.
Captain Akins.
Captain Akins.
And as the captain of the city of Anderson?
As the captain of the city of Anderson.
Will equally, fairly, and impartially?
Will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill?
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me?
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And we use my best abilities and skill?
We use my best ability and skills.
Preserve the peace?
Reserve the peace.
Carry into effect?
Carry into effect.
According to law?
According to law.
The purpose for which I've been elected?
The purpose of which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
A minutes of our October 24th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not here any. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by the mayor pro temp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of October 24th passed unanimously. We have one item of old business and that item is request consideration, request second and third reading ordinance 16-20 authorizing the sale of property located at 913 East Market Street. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is one of those times when we have the opportunity to do something that is both beneficial to a citizen and also is very beneficial to us. The piece of property at 913 East Market Street, we were approached by Brazita Presley who offered to purchase this city-owned property because she had family members who lived adjacent and to the piece of property. She's agreed to pay for this lot, the sum of $3,000, which we have agreed is a very reasonable price for this piece of property. And certainly, it is beneficial to us for several reasons. Number one, it goes back on our tax books by being in private ownership. Number two, we have the opportunity to see that in the future perhaps this property will be put to additional use in more so than just a vacant lot. And number three, the city will no longer be responsible for its future maintenance. So all of those things are definitely benefits to the city and continue to add to the stability of the neighborhood as far as its future use. The staff recommends passage on second and third reading.
Thank you. We had discussion a couple meetings ago. Any other comments, questions?
Can we pass this on second reading?
Have a first by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. John Roberts. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the second reading.
I move we adopt it on the third and final reading.
Have a first by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We've got four items of new business and the first item is request referral to the planning commission, a petition to annex and zone to G C General Commercial, approximately 12 acres located at 3801 Clemson Boulevard. Ms. McConnell?
To give you a little bit of background about where this piece of property is, that's property on Clemson Boulevard is the part of the shopping center where Kmart is located. So it would include the Kmart building itself as well as part of that parking, or excuse me, that parking area that is in front of the Kmart. At this point, this is a referral to the planning commission and as you know, this begins the start of the public process for the annexation and zoning of this to General Commercial. We certainly recommend it. It would go before the planning commission at their November the 15th meeting, which please notice that is a different meeting date than their normal first Tuesday of the month. So it was a scheduling issue. November the 15th is that meeting day.
Thank you.
So all that parking lot is owned by two different people?
Half of the buildings are, the buildings are in different ownership. Yes, it's divided in half. The parking lot itself, Maurice, is in two ownerships as well. So, yes.
Anything else, guys?
Make a motion with a move there.
Have a first by the mayor pro temp.
Second.
Second by Ms. Newton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously to the planning commission. Our second item of new business is request consideration of an ordinance amending section 2653 of the city of Anderson Business License Ordinance regarding the solid waste fee. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, as you all know, in some cases, and this is one of them, where the city of Anderson is actually the collecting entity for Anderson County. Through our business license ordinance, we collect a solid waste fee and that is collected at the time it's passed on through our business license office. That's the collecting point. Over the years, we've been doing this since about 2007, 2008. Over time, Anderson County has passed increases in that solid waste fee. Your, by your ordinance, we have, we would be required to amend or pass an ordinance that amends that fee each time they pass an increase along. What this ordinance does is it provides for you to pass an ordinance one time that says if the county enacts increases of that solid waste fee, that we would continue to adopt that fee, but you don't have to go through the passage of the ordinance again. So it sets forth the process by which we would pass on the fee. Again, we're just a pass-through. This is not a fee that we're imposing upon our citizens. And this is, this is necess, that makes it unnecessary for you to enact an ordinance every time the county changes the fee for the solid waste fee in the future. So this is an opportunity to simply make things easier for us to enact what the county has adopted. They typically will look at those fees as part of their budget process and this would mean you don't have to act on it in ordinance form each time they change the fee.
When was the last time they changed the fee?
They have changed the fees several times over the past few years, but the last time we did it was in 2008.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Chairman?
What is the current fee now that we have on it?
Ours is seventy, seventy dollars.
Okay, so that is the current fee?
No, that's the current fee that we've been charging. Their current fee goes up to eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents in 2017.
Okay, and what does that fee, that applies to a single trash can or a per, per office or per business or?
I'm gonna ask our experts.
It would be per, per business.
Okay. So my question to that is when we, if we apply it, you know, because we're supposed to try to be pro-business, but if we have a, if we have a single proprietor business and they pay the same fee as a business with 50 employees that use a single trash can, correct?
That's correct. It's per unit.
Okay. So, so even though if you have a, if you have a business that has one trash can and you have a half a dozen or more individual businesses in that that are using the single trash can, it's six times seventy dollars for that one trash can?
Yeah, if they do not have commercial pickup, we charge the business, the, each business, a business like, I mean, the solid waste fee. So if they have commercial pickup, then we do not charge them, or if it's a home occupation business, we do not charge them.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason for the fee, the solid waste fee negates us having to pay the tipping fee every time we go to the landfill and dispose of it. So that, that is the reason for that.
So what would be the largest business that you could have and have a residential can or a can type? And you could have 100 people in your business and still use the can, use a, a blue can? I mean, I'm just, I know that may be an exaggeration.
I'm not sure how that works.
Carrie needs to help us with that.
It just seems that there's some inequities if you have a single proprietorship and, and they're using, they're creating very little waste, but yet you have a business with 25, they're being charged the same as if your single, your single occupancy business.
Yes, it varies from business to business. If it's in the downtown district, they have specials because of the confined areas and there's not enough room for dumpsters. Historically, if there's a dumpster at a business, if that business moves and someone else moves in that business, they're required to have a dumpster. But no matter if they have one cart or five carts or 15 carts, they pay the one fee as well as our cart fee.
So this ordinance would not require us to raise the fee?
No, you're not, you're not acting on the fee at all, other, other than passing along whatever Anderson County has adopted as that solid waste fee. So it's their fee, we simply collect it on their behalf. And we collect it at the time that business licenses are, when someone gets a business license or renews a business license. So it's part of that business license process. That's, that's the mechanism that is used. So the ordinance that's before you tonight, simply, you've passed it before, but you, but you've passed it when the fee was the seventy-dollar fee. Anderson County has raised that fee over time and this, now it's gone up to eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, but we didn't have a mechanism to collect the eighty-two forty-nine because your ordinance stopped it at that seventy-dollar fee. So what we're saying is that instead of each time bringing that ordinance back to you, every time Anderson County changes their fee, that this ordinance would negate the necessity to bring you that ordinance each time and have a new ordinance that establishes a different fee every time. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I just have one question. Does that mean the county charges us per business? So if we, if we collect 5,000 business licenses or fees at 70,000, they charge us 5,000 times that rate?
They don't charge us, they charge the, the business.
Yeah, that, so, so everything gets passed directly?
Everything gets passed directly to them. We don't keep, keep that, no.
All right. Anything else? Did you have something, Mr. Stewart?
Yeah.
Motion, wait. First reading? While we're doing them first. This one, first reading?
Yeah, you make it first.
First reading.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Have a first one.
I'll bid on first reading.
First one, Mr. John Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously on the first reading. Thanks, guys. Our third item is request consideration to purchase record management system for the Police Department. Ms. McConnell?
Items three and four, we'll certainly take them individually, but they do have a relevance to each other as you'll see as we move forward through this one. The first one having to do with our records management system for the Police Department. We've got Chief Stewart in the audience with us tonight as well as Jason Nixon with our I D department, the, who can help. Certainly, they work together to put these specifications together. And as you all know, record, the electronic records management system is an important part of everything that we do in the Police Department, from, from things that are required by SLED to incident reports to vehicle accidents, you name it, they have to maintain records of it. Over time, our, as it so happens, our LawTrak is a system that we've been using for, I think probably 16 years or so. It's not supported by a Microsoft platform anymore. And therefore, we went through a process, a request for proposals from vendors looking to find what was the best solution for us. We have come up with that and I'd like to ask Jason and the chief, both. Chief, would you come kind of share a little bit of information about what this does and what we're recommending?
Again, as Ms. McConnell stated, the company that we are with now, our current vendor at LawTrak, is what we use for our record management system for the officers on the road as well as our jail management software. That system is in a place where it has lost its compliance certificate with Microsoft. And in preparation, moving forward, we're looking at companies that are gonna be there in the distant future. We're also looking at this because in the very near future, January 2018, we'll be required to be compliant with the governor's order that we go to e-ticketing. Right now, our current status is when an officer completes an incident report, he takes his notes and he comes into the Police Department and actually enters that information in a record, incident report, inside the building. This will allow us to keep the officers out on the road. Virtually, like many of the District Five schools here within our area utilize the Chromebooks. That's what we're looking at. We'll utilize the same type Chromebook technology and it will meet all the C J standard criminal justice information systems. It will meet those safety and security standards. It's basically just a way that we need to move toward the future at this time.
It puts computing into our police vehicles is essentially what it does. And it is a web, web-based, web browser-based system.
And it is also based in the cloud. For what I didn't mention, we have beta-tested the system since February where we were able to look at it. One of the developers of this program, Agisant, is a resident here of Anderson County. Clemson P D is utilizing the system right now as well as Florence P D. That made a big difference. They were both with LawTrak in the past, both of those agencies. I know Lexington is looking right now, which is an agency very comparable to our size in Anderson.
Explain the, the e-ticketing process. Not that I want to get a speeding ticket, but, but is it, you have to have an email? How do, how does someone receive an e-ticket?
Well, basically, we're catching up with what the state, the technology's put out there at the back of your driver's license and your registration card. We have that technology right now. Our department's already compliant with the SCAT system, the South Carolina Automated Ticket System, where we're completing our accident reports online. Basically, when you're stopped, we can scan the license, we can scan the registration card, the ticket will be printed out by a thermal printer. And that information, as soon as that ticket is written and we're able to upload it, it's sent to DPS.
Gotcha.
Basically, what we're doing, an actual ticket, when you're, when you're writing it, the violator will get a blue copy, but there's also a yellow, a white, and a pink copy that goes to the court, to DPS, to our records. And all that is being managed. And what the state is doing to acquire much-needed highway safety funds to fix our roads, we're, we're getting compliant with the order by the federal government. And that is the order that we need to comply with e-ticketing. And we have already submitted our plan of action to that to the state.
You have any questions? Ms. Chairman?
The, I guess the discrepancy between, there's five times discrepancy between the lowest and the highest.
Yes.
Is there a primary reason why that is, is so great?
There is. The vendor, again, he, he was a developer. He's from Anderson County right here. Also, the cost on that is based on the size of the population of the community. That's Agisant. The other companies are not necessarily, they chose to do that. So a smaller agency does not have to pay the big price that some of the other companies are charging. Also, there, there was an agreement we had in place first. This company has been around for a long time. They're, the previous name was called P D Manager. The Sheriff's Office used that system for a while. As they've upgraded to this new technology that's called Agisant, it's a cloud-based system. In exchange for us beta-testing the product to begin with, they, it was a price reflection on that also.
So we are recommending the low bid to Agisant Technologies for $42,620. And that, if you will note, yes, there is that large price difference from the other three vendors, but it, it is based upon the fact that, that population and the fact that it, I think we certainly did get the benefit of, of discounting, yes, and beta-testing it. That accounted for a lot.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make approval, make a motion that we approve item B3 for $42,620.
Have a first one, Mr. Chapman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Buck Roberts. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. We'll go right into the next one, which is request consideration to purchase laptops for the police traffic and patrol departments. Ms. McConnell?
And as you see, this is very related to the previous item. This will allow the Police Department to have these new tablets, Chromebooks, in their, in their vehicles so that they can move forward with the e-ticketing that the chief spoke about. We did take bids on this particular type of device and received three. Promivo for $17,003.36 was the low bid, PC Nation at $24,060, C W, excuse me, CDW at $22,381. It is true that we will have a monthly charge for the data and that will be built into, that cost is almost $1,900 a month. We will build that cost certainly into our budget as we move forward next year. But we do recommend moving forward with the low bidder at $17,336. And again, this is one of those things that we are certainly required to move forward as far as the e-ticketing is concerned. And as you so often have heard us, I guess, complain about, this is one of those almost unfunded mandates, we're being required to do it, but there's not funding that comes down from the state to help us. But this will allow us to purchase 53 Chromebooks as well as the Wi-Fi hardware necessary for us to move forward with this particular technology and our ability in the P D.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Mr. Lockridge and Ms. Stewart?
First, explain to me, I understand about Wi-Fi and all of that, but the hotspot part, explain that to me.
Basically, it's just, we'll have hotspots in all of the vehicles. That'll give them the ability to-
Oh, the hotspots will be in the vehicle?
They'll be in the vehicles, correct.
Okay, will this, will this, how many, 53 Chromebooks?
Yes, sir.
Will that make it in a, for all of our police cars?
I think that will hit patrol for the first part. All our uniformed personnel, it will hit them first. We'll try to break this up into stages since the requirement's not till January of 18, so we'll revisit this in the next budget year for the-
so we'll revisit this in the next budget year for the second half of the police department.
Okay.
Ms. Stewart, and then Dr. Thompson.
I know we, we had said that we went with our wide-area provider, AT&amp;T, but did we shop around? Because there's a lot of good deals out there right now. I just switched over to Sprint myself, and I got the Wi-Fi hotspots, about four of them, and pretty cheap, and just as good a service. So did we switch all, did we check with all the other providers to see what they could provide the same thing for?
We did speak with other providers. AT&amp;T actually have given us the hardware, so the actual Wi-Fi units or the Wi-Fi hotspots, they've given to us at no cost. And the monthly charge for that is very competitive, but also, they provide all of the wide-area network for us as it is, for our camera systems, et cetera. And we felt like they had the best bandwidth available for us, so that we could, you know, do what we needed to, of all the officers would be able to, you know, have a good connection and be able to transfer the data without any drops.
Dr. Thompson.
This requires a great deal of training for the police officers to use this system.
There will be some training involved. The good thing is that the Agilent, Agilent system was, was designed by police officers, so it's very intuitive. So I think it, the, the layout of the screens will be much more intuitive.
What is the DEA e-share account?
That's your task force, that we supply the officer to the DEA for their task force, and that is the proceeds that we recover from.
So it's, it's coming, it's coming out of the DEA e-share account, which means you're not having to dip into your savings account to get it out, but it's from confiscated proceeds?
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Anything else, guys?
As long as, Mayor, with that, I'd like to make a motion, we approve this. General.
First by the mayor pro temp.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kyle Newton. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Minister, a briefing, Ms. McConnell.
Because we, we're blessed with a little bit of rain yesterday, we did not have our All Saints Day program at Silverbrook Cemetery. That will be occurring this coming Sunday, the 20th, at 2:30 p.m. On Tuesday night, we have the Westside Community Coalition meeting at 4:00 p.m. at the Westside Community Center, and also the Seat Two Neighborhood Watch at 6:00 p.m. at Fire Station Three. Please mark your calendars as well for Friday, this coming Friday, which at 6:00 p.m. will be opening Holiday Ice in Carolina Renn Park. The following week, of course, is Thanksgiving, where the city offices will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and on Friday after Thanksgiving. Mayor, that's all we have, other than, we do have an executive session item, a contractual matter concerning possible economic development agreement.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go in the executive session.
Go move it.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, we stay on adjourned.
Take a motion to bring aside the executive session.
First by Mr. Roberts. Second by Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, we're at executive session, and executive session had a discussion, the city manager led us in a discussion in regards to contractual matter with a possible economic development agreement. We have asked the city manager and the city attorney to, after input from council, to look at going forward with a document to bring to council in regards to development agreement. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move it.
First by Ms. Lockridge, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, we stay on adjourned.